How you doing?
Ready? Good. Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting, the October 7 meeting of the Planning Board of the Village of Dobbs Ferry. We have eight items on our agenda tonight. I understand one will not be appearing, so we have seven items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is to, first, I'd like to have a resolution to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Got the minutes of the last meeting.
No comments.
The clerk got them to us today, and we appreciate her diligence on that. And I have printed them and looked at them, and they look fine. I have no comments.
Same.
Good. All right, I would move their adoption. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item number three on our agenda, or number two, actually. 156 Palisades Street, continuation of public hearing for site plan approval for proposed new multifamily building. Would move that we open the public hearing. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Corey Salamone and Zara Lynn Steinmetz here tonight on behalf of 156 Palisades Street LLC. Here with me this evening are Michael Lang, Principal of 156 Palisades, and Christine Griffin, Project Architect. As you'll recall, we were before you back in September 9th, and we presented two alternatives to you at that meeting. The first alternative wasn't really viable due to site constraints. The second alternative, we presented on a more schematic level. It was a approximately 8700 square foot building, three stories with four units. Based on our discussions, it seemed like your board was relatively happy with that alternative. We went and we had engineering prepared, made that submission. So we're here for you tonight to continue that discussion. And I'm going to turn it over to Christine in a minute to go through the plans. But just procedurally, as the chairman said, we're continuing the public hearing. In reading Valerie's memo today, I noted that there was no EAF or coastal forms submitted. So we will get that in in time for your next meeting, so we can move forward with the secret process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Christine to run through the plans.
Right.
Good evening. I'm Christina Griffin, the architect. I'm also here with, well, remotely Suzanne Levine is joining us on Zoom, and she's just going to help me see through the slides. So we, yeah, here she is.
I'm sharing now.
So appears.
Suzanne Levine is a project designer, also working on the project with me. And she's going to help us, help take us through the slides. Tonight, we're showing you a complete set of drawings, floor plans, elevations, site plan, based on the scheme that we discussed at the last meeting. We've also developed the civil engineering drawings and some 3D views. This is the front elevation of the building. And that's just our cover sheet, so we're going to go back to that in a little bit. Suzanne, okay, this is our site plan. So we've designed a building that will meet the zoning code and lot coverage, setbacks, impervious coverage. But we, but not in height, and that's because we're trying to reduce the amount of excavation into the site. This is a steep slope. We have a difference of about 15 feet from the center line of the front of the lot to the center line in the back. So building is brought towards, Ed is raising his hand.
Yeah, I, you don't have the sliding scale for the lot coverage, impervious coverage. You, I believe it's 49%. You have required 60, which is prescriptive. So just to be correct, it's the height and the impervious coverage.
Actually, Ed, thank you for mentioning that. I'm sorry, but we actually, on our last submission, we didn't update the impervious coverage. What we have, what we're showing you here is actually 44%. And that's what I thought the maximum was. And we, we made a mistake when we submitted it. We kept it at 60. We had that originally.
Okay. I'm looking at a different plan than the one that was on our documents here says 54%.
Yes. That was actually the previous scheme. Now we're at 44, and we'll make sure you have the correct drawings. But this is the area of all the impervious surfaces on this scheme is 44%. Yes. Patio, the walls, the driveway and the walk in the front.
But the coverage is conforming, right? The overall coverage.
My understanding is that is the maximum, 44.
And I'm talking about impervious surface and my building.
Building coverage is actually 32.7, just slightly under 32.8, which is the sliding scale maximum. And
I think our planner noted that the frontage is sufficient to it. You need 87 feet and a
Yeah, sliding scale for the lot width, too?
Lot width is something that I think is hard for us to, for me to address, but maybe
Wasn't that that be a pre-existing legal non-conformity? I mean, because, I mean, obviously, this lot was created long before this sliding scale was created, and so
Right, but I think you're, well, again, I was just highlighting things that I think that might need to be waived. And if you're increasing the number of units on site, then, you know, a lot of communities consider that as then something, you're increasing the intensity, so therefore you would need to have the variance.
I understand that. I mean, I would respectfully disagree and think that it would be, you know.
Well, I'm not, it's really Ed, who's the building inspector, who would make that final determination. I'm just highlighting that these are things that don't need the zoning.
Sure, and I would agree with that. Like I said, I think that's a pre-existing non-conformity. But again, if Ed made the decision that we would need a waiver from that because we're increasing the intensity on the site.
I did not.
Okay.
So the impervious coverage, as I've calculated, is 49.2% is maximum. So I would could compare that off-meeting. So I think you could go higher, Christine.
I will, I, I just checked it before I came here, but we have been, the patio size, we're trying to make it modest and make sure that we, we want to meet the code in every way we can. The only reason why we are asking for a waiver for height really has to do with the site we're working with and the difficulty and pushing the building down to meet the maximum height.
Right.
But Ed, I'll, I'll review that and go over that again. But it is our intention, and we're, if you measured and it looks over, we'll make sure we're not. But I think since we submitted those drawings, we might have changed that patio.
Right, I'm looking at, I guess you changed the drawings since you submitted the, the most recent ones that we had scanned. But so, but what I'm saying is that in this one you're showing on the screen tonight, you're a, like 5% under, which is, you know, I'm saying you could have more impervious coverage.
Okay. You know, we always scrambled to meet the deadline before the next meeting. So the one thing that we were, we left out was impervious surfaces. But but if that's the case, we're under, that's where we want to be, because we really don't want any kind of waiver for, there's no need for it, because I think we'll have a very comfortable patio space, driveway and the walk to work. So this plan is showing the building pushed towards the front, as we showed you last time. The setback to the main building is 10 feet. The prevailing front yard setback is 7 feet 4. The side yards are more than the minimum. On the right, we have 12 instead of 10 feet. We did that because of the concern of being close to the neighbor, even though 10 is the minimum. And then on the other side, we have 13 feet 10. Our rear yard is required to be 25 feet, but we actually have 51 feet. So the building is pushed towards the front so that we can get a light ventilation into the building around the sides and the back, and then have a very low retaining wall at, at the back of these outdoor spaces for each unit. It's only going to be 3 feet 9 inches. And our design previously that had the building sunken down had two retaining walls that added up to nine feet. So this is still a four-unit building. 32.7% lot coverage, just under the maximum. And all the setbacks are met. I'm going to go on now to the next slide. This is just, yes, the garage plan. Suzanne's blowing it up. The garage plan is, just as before, we've added information and we're showing four spaces, handicap, one handicap space, recycling waste center, utility room down on this level. The garage does push back 3 feet 8 beyond the floor above, but that's underground. Previously, we had a garage that had seven spaces. We, we can, if we wanted the seven, which is what's required for four units, we have to go back into the hill. And we have plenty of space. We can meet the setback to do that, but we would have to do more excavation. So we wanted to ask for a waiver for the parking. This is a section through the building, and you can see that because of the way the building is situated in the hill, we can come right out to grade, a low retaining wall in the back. In the front of the building, we can have a very gentle slope from the garage out to the street. So storm drainage works really well. And the height of the center line of the sidewalk to the top of the parapet in the front of the building is 33 feet 4 to the top of the, of the building, uppermost point is 40 feet 4, which is 3 feet 4 more than the maximum height to a flat roof. You can also see in this section that we have set back the third floor at 12 feet. In planet jogs, but in each, at each jog, it goes back 12 feet. Our ceiling heights are modest, 9 feet 2, 9 feet at the third floor. We have just a bulkhead for staircases on the very top to allow access to the roof for the top two units. I'd like to see the next slide, please. Here are our floor plans. We have two units on the first floor. On the left, we have a two-bedroom, two-bath, about 1360 square feet. On the right, we have a one-bedroom, one and a half bath. These units are oriented so that they open up two patios and backyards in the rear. And then on our second floor, we have two duplexes. The one on the left is 2400 square feet, three bedrooms, two and a half baths. And one on the right is 2100 square feet. There is an elevator that provides handicap access up to the entrance of each unit. And then when you go into the townhouses, they have staircases going up to the roof. The outdoor space for the townhouses is, is provided by roof decks on the third floor, which brings us to that plan. This plan has a, each of these townhouses have a, why I call them, they're really duplexes. They have roof decks in the front, assuming there may be a view there. And that's their outdoor space on the third floor. There's a family room and a master bedroom on these floors. And then on the very top of the roof, we just have bulkheads for stairs for each unit for access to the top. Next slide is just showing our initial design of the front facade. The idea is that we would maintain the stone wall that goes down the sidewalk along the street, either rebuild it to match existing or save it somehow, because it's a nice element on the street and have a cutout so that you would remove part of it, so you could have a walk to the front door on the left, and then the garage door on the right. This facade has a main facade that's 33 feet 6 wide, and that is nine feet in front of this other facade that's 17 feet 4 that recesses back. And the reason why it's recessed back is so there's enough space for our car in front to park while waiting for the door to open to the garage. There'll be windows, and the top floor is setback 12 feet and is done in a different material with metal panel. At the very top, you're just seeing a railing, probably a glass railing for the top roof deck. Next slide, please. So, and we are looking at, you know, simple cutout openings, as, as you see in the street, brick veneer on the front facade. And then as we turn around the building, stucco. This is just showing the jogs in the building at the very top, and there's roof, there are trellises over the roof decks. And this is, this is showing the section that shows the gentle entrance, you know, exit from, out to the grade in the back. So because the building is high enough, now we can keep our windows above grade and have a very small retaining wall at the backyard. Next slide, Suzanne. It's a rear facade, where you have the full, the full three floors that you can see. There'll be privacy fencing between the units and the yards. Next slide. This is the, this is our, well, north, the other side of the elevation, which is just the flip side. Similar treatment with brick in the front, stucco on the side, and metal panel on top to break up the materials as you go up. Next slide, please. These are our color schemes. We took a look at, you know, what kind of colors and materials. We're thinking of neutral grays and having the entrance being a focal point of the building. Having the parapet form the balcony above instead of any open railing, since that's not very seen on the street, so that those roof decks are tucked in behind the parapet. Next slide, please. This is our streetscape. Maybe we can go in close here to see. This is the proposed building as shown, the second building in, and this is drawn in scale. And as you can see, the top of the building is, is similar to the tops of the buildings on left and right. And then the front facade is kind of in line with the top of the fascia board of each of the buildings, right and left. And you can see the relationship of this building with the other buildings on the street. Down below is our site context area map, showing the building in a purple color, showing the shape of the building, looking down at it. You can see the front yard is very similar to other front yards on the street and the setback. This property has a nice amount of space on the side yards and space in the back, which is, well, I guess the, the yards in the back are vary quite a bit on the street. But I guess there's a lot of variety, but this is the relationship that we're, we have between this and the neighboring buildings. They're varying shape and size and length. Next slide, please, Suzanne. Okay, I think, before you go there, could you just show the, the board, the list of setbacks? Just want to let them know that we provided a breakdown of the setbacks for each property. Well, each of, I think, nine properties, we took an average to come up with the prevailing front yard setbacks. This is actually, some of the information has been taken from other research by other consultants. Next slide, please, Suzanne. The average is 7.14 on the, of these buildings on this side of the street. We also have an aerial view, just looking down at the building to show how the building fits within the neighborhood. And I think we can show you, we have actually a link to a spin-around view. Before we get there, this is a rendering that shows a view taken from a pedestrian walking along the street. So if you're walking down Palisades, you would look up, and you can see the top of that front wall of the two-story part of the building. And then you can just about see the trellises and the top of the third floor that is setback 12 feet from that front facade. And Suzanne, I don't know if you
I'm going to share, I'm going to share the model now.
The mo, the model that shows a view that can be turned around so you can get an idea of how the building fits on the street. The, the information is taken from Google Maps. The, the trees are very rough. But we hope that this helps to give you an idea of the scale of the building. I don't know if she, if you can just slow down and go, it's, it's kind of, it's hard to control.
Yeah. We can share the link for you to look at on your own, too, if you, it's easier.
That would be great.
If you want to see a certain view, just please let me know.
Really sort of closer in on the three, on the building's flanking.
Yeah. Get down there. Let it destroy, I'm afraid, with the trees.
We were trying to get the, trees removed, more trees removed, so we wouldn't have, but we just couldn't get it in time for the meeting, but we, we're working on it.
I think, you know, this works best for context, more than a detailed side-by-side comparison. A little further away is a little, maybe a little better.
Maybe we should land on the streetscape, Suzanne.
Yeah.
Just to
Pull, pull, on this, put land on the street, yeah. Try, I'll try. It's a little.
I think that's very helpful, because I think one of the those things that we've been looking at, and there've been comments from others, is the proportion and how it fits into the neighborhood and so on. And I think this is very helpful in giving us a sense of that and other people a sense of that.
Also, we, tonight, we also have the civil engineering drawings. We also submitted them, the stormwater management design.
Yeah, actually.
We can finish with that. So that's the extent of our presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
No, I mean, from my point of view, the good news is, I think in terms of the overall massing and strategy for the site, we're finally there, like as far as, you know, pretty much. But I just want to, I want to, there's one thing that bugs me, and, and you're going to hear it from, it's more of an AHRB issue than it is our issue, although since it might have massings, it might have some small massing implications. I'm going to comment on it anyway. The idea of the, of the maximum, you know, there was this idea in the character guidelines that for a big building like this, it would be the sort of this primary mass, the forward one that you have, and that other, to the extent that it was bigger than that, other, the other things that were sort of attached to it would seem smaller, right? So what's, what's weird about the way it's done here, and maybe it's just a matter of the fenestration on the setback piece, and maybe it's the lack of shadow on the elevations. If you go to the elevate, if you go to the, just a straight-on front elevation, right, it, it doesn't look like there's a big A and a small B. It looks like there's ABA, right? The thing is symmetrical down the middle, which makes it harder to give this reading of one mass with something else attached to it. So one way to do, you know, so it, for me, what that means is that the setback piece has to be, should be treated somehow in a way that is not mirror-symmetrical to the far-left-hand side of the building. I don't know if that's just a fenestration thing, if it's like some of the difference in the materials. But it, it, right now, it's, it's basically a symmetrical building with one, you know, one, one piece of it pushed back.
In other words, you lose the idea that it's a one.
That there's one big piece with something else attached to it goes away because of the sort of A, B, like it's, like it's center-symmetrical, right? So I think that may just be an AHRB, that may just be an AHRB kind of articulation issue, which I, and I know you'll hear this from Eric, see, with, with Steve and me working on these character guidelines. But I think what's fun, and you know, part of it is that you don't have a shadow line. I realize it's, this is, the sun's coming from the south, so you don't see the shadow that the part up near the street would cast on the volume to the back. So in terms of like the massing, the basic footprint, I think it's right. It's just that it's weird, it's funny for it to be symmetrical, given this, you know what? I think you know what I mean, right?
Oh, you know, I always feel like a really good design evolves, so we're ready to keep going.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm
And, because I think
I'm about, I'm about good news.
I think we're kind of looking at the shape.
Thing is right. I'm just looking for, for that, you know, that kind of sense of it being this part A and a smaller part B, which by having everything exactly symmetrical is kind of fighting that. So that's, I'm just giving you a heads up that I think that that's something that's worth working on because I know the issue. And then the other thing is that in order, and this again is like an architectural, I think mostly an architectural treatment thing, right, is whether or not the, the lobby area can somehow, to me, still looks a little bit mean, in the sense that it still looks like there's this kind of a plinth that the other three stories are sitting on. And to the extent, even though I know it's the stair that's behind those windows in the middle, right, primarily, if there was a way for the ground level there, what we're looking at right at the garage level where the entrance door is, if there was a way for that to be treated with a lot more glazing, even if it's the stair that you would be seeing somehow, or that little window that's down by the garage being bigger, but maybe it's that little window that's down by the garage being bigger, but maybe it's sort of the canopy, I don't know, but making the entrance look sort of more open to the sidewalk.
Or inviting.
Somehow more transparent with the the rest of the sidewalk. But I think it, for me, the basic massing of the thing and the disposition on the site and elevations are right, finally, for me. I don't know, have the other board members feel.
Thank you. Yeah, other comments?
I would just echo Rob that I think we're on the right track.
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah, very much.
For me, it's, I, I think I agree too. The two parts of the building that are that are forward. I'm just looking at the streetscape here with the buildings on either side. I'm just missing the reinforcement of the line above, I guess it's, it would be this second floor that lines up with the porch to the building to the south. I mean, there is sort of a of a line of, I I see that you've pretty much aligned the height of the windows, which I I commend you for. But the the way the porch on the building to the south and this elements on the building to the north, sort of, there's some kind of a definition right above the windows on the, it would be your second floor, right?
It's sort of this horizontal expression line thing, and the character guidelines is this. You can see it on the other buildings, actually on this elevation, that there's both eve line, which you're going to get at the parapet and the setback, but then there's also, there tends to be this other line, more or less at the second floor level, which is often the top of a porch or some other.
Now, this is a AHRB thing, I mean, I'm just. No, I just think a lot of care needs to be taken with the forward sections of that of the building in relation to the other building, so. But other than that, I think you're there.
Would be helpful if they go to the AHRB before our next year.
I was thinking that, I think maybe now is a good time to actually go to the AHRB since I think there's a feeling on the board that the basic disposition of the big pieces is right, the stuff that we focus on primarily. I think probably it does make sense to go to the AHRB.
Then when you come back at the next meeting, we could have a read from them. And I think it would eliminate some of the questions and comments, perhaps. Seeing that's their job. No, thank you. Any other comments, sir?
Is it, is this a public hearing still?
It is a public hearing. I'm sorry.
Clarification on a couple things.
Yeah, sure.
One, I just received an email with the EAF and the Coastal Forum that was submitted in January of this year.
Right, but it's not based off of this particular. Yes.
Okay, so we'll submit revised ones for you then. And then if we could just get some clarification from Mr. Manley with respect to the lot width, whether he's considering this a pre-existing.
The frontage.
Yes.
Which, I mean, according to the sliding scale, it should be eighty-seven, about eighty-seven.
It's, and that, and might find it as a pre-existing non-conforming years.
Okay.
I mean, not years, sorry.
Condition.
So it's got a.
Mr. Manley wants to chime in now, or if he.
I, now that we have, you know, an acceptable plan, I will fully vet the zoning requirements, but I I don't see it as we're creating a lot here, that's a pre-existing condition in my first look at.
So given that we're close, we're going to give the revised documents. We have a resolution or are we not there yet?
I'd be reluctant to do that yet until we go to the HRB and we see what comes out of it. I think it's close. I think it's.
And then you also need a lighting plan and landscape plan as well. That the board needs to review that.
All right, we'll get all that.
Yeah.
And you might want to ask the AHRB to join your next meeting. I think that might be helpful.
Yeah, well, well, let, yeah, let's. If if they could go to the HRB prior to our next meeting, and then we'll see what the result of that is and see if it, having a joint meeting would be productive. Okay, okay, thank you very much. You know, it is a public hearing, I think we opened the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this? I didn't think so.
Anybody online?
Anybody online? Nobody online.
We've worn everyone out.
So do we continue the public hearing until next month?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I moved, we continue the public hearing to the next meeting. Second, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Good.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Do we, do we know the date of the next meeting by any chance?
I'm sorry.
Do you know the date of the next meeting?
Thank you. What the next, the day, the next meeting is?
November fourth.
November four, okay. Um, the next item on our agenda is 253 Justin Avenue, which is would be a continuation of public hearing for proposed demolition and replacement of single-family home.
But they're not here, are they?
But I don't think there were no, there were no submissions, and I think we were expecting a new submission.
Was it a public hearing or did we?
Yeah, yeah, yes, we did have a public hearing, but.
So should we just continue that?
Just continue, stays open, right?
I.
If anybody wants to speak about it.
If nobody's here, you ought to adjourn it till the next.
There's somebody here with their, with their hand raised. I'm not sure if it's for 253 Justin or did we skip over eighteen?
Yeah, eighteen Carolina was skipped.
I'm sorry.
And we skipped over eighteen Fairlawn. That was number three.
No, sorry about that.
But it's public hearing, I don't know if you all have anything more that you want to say, yeah. Yeah.
All right. So we continue the public hearing to the next meeting for 253 Judson.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, now we'll do item number three, eighteen Fairlawn Avenue, continuation of public hearing for proposed new in-ground pool and raised spa. Good night.
Good night.
Michael, can you hear us? Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
Are you for eighteen Carolina?
Well, I was here for 253 Judson, but.
Oh.
But yeah, I think, I I thought we were, you know, like we said in our letter, we were working with Christina Griffin and her team concerning a lot of the the already proposed issues and we're going to be addressing the trees, the architectural context and conforming to the new zoning guidelines. And I I thought we were going to hear some feedback about the the visit that was held this last two weeks, two weeks ago, or we, we can have that.
There was a letter submitted by the Villages Consulting Landscape Architect who you met when we had the visit. And and that letter is available on the Villages website, I don't think I need to, like, should read it now, but basically it, the the, it seems like the big issue or now is to have a consult, well, you were there, so you heard, to have a consulting arborist come and, you know, someone who's not looking to get hired to do the work, but somebody who can give us an independent opinion about the species of trees, their health, and mitig, things that could be done to mitigate whatever the impact is of the new construction.
Great, so I spoke to Susan Janehill, my landscape architect, that spoke to Suzanne, and they got together to choose an arborist, and I think the the appointment is on Thursday, Thursday morning, so they're going to meet onsite and take care of that.
So that's happening on Thursday morning, this Thursday, next Thursday?
The next, the following to, the following Thursday. Well, yeah, the next Thursday, today is Thursday.
A week from today.
Yes, yes.
Okay, do you know what time?
Um, hold on, let me check, I think it was ten thirty.
Okay, because I think I'd like to be there if I, if I can, I let this up the street, so.
Yeah. Very good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we done with Judson, so we can go back to Fairlawn? All right, item number three, eighteen Fairlawn Avenue, continuation of public hearing for proposed new in-ground pool and raised spa. So I move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone here or online or anywhere that wants to speak to this eighteen Fairlawn Avenue?
Good evening, can you hear me now? Good evening, everyone, I I can't hear anybody yet.
Uh, yes, we hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Abdulaziz Youssef from Hudson Engineering. We present in and play for eighteen Fairlawn, I'm just going to share my screen.
This is the one with the pool right between the building and the street. Top of the one with the big retainers, that's the other. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a pool that's right on the road. It's weird. Between two streets, it's very strange, but.
So this board asked for a resolution, a draft resolution, so you have that as part of your packets, and I believe Anthony had a few more comments on this project that.
Yeah, we we issued a memo, which I sent out this afternoon.
So.
Yeah. Um, we received the memo and we, our office is currently in process of addressing them. I I think what we're going to be doing is trying to get more information as regarding regarding the existing drainage system. Can everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
So basically, as far as compared to the previous plan, we basically moved the, because a lot of the comments, the we, the memory received were engineering comments, so we tried to address them by moving the drainage system from this side to here because there are possible cold tech chambers. However, again, we did this with the data survey we had, but what we're going to do is try to get more information either from the previously approved stormwater system or during the more extensive survey, you know, get a better idea of what's happening in this site. And obviously, we're going to discuss this with Ms. Oliveri, um, just to to get everything moving.
Yeah, our main concern is, there's an, it's, as we suspected, there was an existing infiltration system, and it's shown there kind of schematically, you know, within the footprint of the pool, and it just says to relocate. So we think they need to look at it in more detail, it might make a lot of sense to combine the two systems. And you can see the 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 place they have it located right now is kind of between the, you know, by the spa and the pool right against those two structures, structures, I'm not sure that's the best way to do this, so I think that needs to be looked at in more detail.
Yes, and we will do that, I mean, because there's, it's not a lot of room, we did propose, you know, impermeable barrier to, I guess, protect the spa and the pool, you know, from from the infiltration chambers, but we will look into this existing drainage system just to see if we could possibly combine them like that. So very has that.
Would you, would you recommend that we defer action until you're satisfied with this?
It kind of depends on what the existing system is and what it looks like, I mean, they're showing a size there that doesn't look that large. You know, so it's feasible that it could be reconfigured or incorporated into the proposed system.
Yeah.
If it is much larger, it could change the layout, you know, I I mean, personally, I have no issue dealing with this. You know, later during a, you know, building permit issuance timeframe, if that's what the board wants to do. But there's really not enough information here to tell you if it's going to work this way, as far as the storm drainage goes.
Well, we're sort of out of the swimming pool season anyway, so it's. Yeah, that's, the timing may not be.
Maybe maybe not the the spa.
Well, I don't know about the spa.
Well, my concern would be just that it's a very tight design, and I'm a little concerned that there is going to be challenges in fitting it all in.
Yeah, I mean, if I, if it was me, I don't know that I'd want to do an infiltration system, you know, directly outside the wall of the pool. You know, the pool, I mean, usually you equip a pool with a hydrostatic relief valve for groundwater. So now we're putting a, you know, a drywall system right next to it, they're they're doing an impermeable barrier. But you know, you're getting water into the, you know, recharging the ground there, so. I, I personally, I think if they, you know, look at putting everything on the right side and combining it, that could be a better setup and more efficient, and do an overflow right out to the cash base and in the street, it would be a little little better configuration. You know, from from the way I see it, anyway.
Well.
Yeah, I agree, I think we should, we should make sure this engineering issue is resolved.
I think we're out of the pool season, so. Well, then I would move that we continue the public hearing in our next meeting.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item number four. No, we did four.
Yeah.
Item number five, fourteen Bell Air Drive, public hearing for proposed additions and site improvements to existing home. This is a public hearing, I would move that we open the public hearing, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's a.
And this is the project with the garage that's part in Hastings and part in Dobbs, is that correct?
Yeah.
Dylan, can you hear us?
I don't know why my son's name is on my Zoom program, but here I am. Um, so Mitch. I would be happy to share my screen if we can do that. And where is it? There with me, sorry.
Is there an engineering memo regarding this?
Yeah.
There is, and essentially the memo is restating what we had in our first memo, and there were, there were a number of issues in terms of the drainage that we thought could be conditional, and they were relatively minor, just verifying some sizing on the drywall, they wanted to put in front of the garage. And there were some other issues we brought up on the, you know, sheeting and shoring that would be required when the garage is removed, things that would be addressed within the building department, building permit stage.
So you don't feel there's any reason we can't go forward with this based on them meeting those requirements?
No, I was okay with it, we we actually did some emails back and forth at the last meeting, and I think we're we're good with the way it is.
Okay. Is public hearing, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this application? Fourteen Bill Air Drive, way, driveway.
So I guess we're ready to close the public hearing, Jennifer's shaking her head.
Hearing nobody, okay. Would that be a motion you made?
I guess I'm making a motion.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Good. Well, we do have a resolution. Okay, we're going to not say anything, which I will bring to the board. Dobbs Street Planning Board Resolution granting site plan approval for property at fourteen Bill Air Drive. Whereas Lori and John Sillerity seek plan, site plan approval to reconstruct existing garage, add new stairs and reconfigure the patios, the subject property is located fourteen Bill Air Drive. The subject property is located fourteen Belair Drive in a one-family residential zone, whereas the project will result in the construction or expansion of a single-family home residence on an approved lot and is classified under state environmental equality act as type two action. Whereas pursuant to several sections of New York State municipal law, planning board referred the application materials to the Westchester County Department Planning for their review and comment, where we, planning board conducted a duly noticed public hearing on October second, seven, which time all those wishing to be heard were given an opportunity. And the public hearing was closed on the seventh, on October seventh. And whereas the planning board has carefully examined and considered the materials submitted by the applicant, you know, list the materials that we did consider and reviewed, planning board reviewed and examined letters and reports by the consulting engineer and planner. And whereas all testimony provided to public hearing was carefully considered. And then the resolution goes on to say that we're familiar with the site. We conducted a review. We considered, among other things, other, other trap access, circulation, parking. And therefore, therefore be it resolved, the planning board of the village of Surrey determines that based on the findings and reasoning set forth below the F, the application for site plan approval is granted subject to the following conditions. And it's number one, except as otherwise provided, all work shall be performed in strict, strict compliance with the plans submitted to planning board and approved by the planning board. The following conditions must be met before the planning board chair may sign the approvals. Site plan, it gives a language to be added. It's conditioned on the after country receiving all approvals required by other government approving agencies. The applicant must address to the full satisfaction of the village engineer all outstanding stormwater, stormwater maintenance agreement and engineering issues raised in the hearings and documents. And finally, the applicant shall pay all, all outstanding consultant review and legal fees in connection with the planning board application. Force in effect, no portion of any approval by the planning board shall take effect until all conditions are met. The final site plan is signed by the chair of the planning board and the final site plan is signed by the planning, signed by the planning board has been filed by the land use officer. And it goes on to say, within a hundred and eighty days, the receiving approved, receiving approval of site plan, the applicant should have two paper copies and one electronic copies. Talks about landscaping commencing work, no, no work may be commenced on any portion without first contact, contacting the building inspector to ensure that all permits and approvals have been obtained and to establish an inspect, inspection schedule. And finally, the issuance of certificate of occupancy, no certificates shall be issued until all improvements shown on the site plan are installed or a sufficient performance guarantee has been posted. I would make that motion. Is there a second? Second. All in favor? Thank you very much. It's approved. Our next item, item number six is seven Fairlawn Avenue. Public hearing on proposed exterior additions to existing home. Seven Fairlawn Avenue, I would move that we open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hello, hi. Yes, I'm going to put the drawings up. And I think Christina is draw, she's joining by Zoom as well.
See her yet?
She's on her way back.
Well, I can, I can start until she joins us if you want to go ahead and do that. Because I think at the last meeting, you, the pre-conference, you had a preview of the drawings. And this submission, the revisions include responses to the, to the consultant memos. We've updated the landscaping plan with native plants. We've supplied a, an electrical plan. And we also have the civil engineering drawings. We went before the ARB about two weeks ago and received approval. And so these are some of the materials we reviewed with the ARB. But this is very similar to, to what we reviewed last, last month, at last month's meeting. The design has pretty much stayed the same. We just have supplementary, supplementary materials.
And remind, remind us again, just in terms of zoning. I'm looking at the calculation sheet. It's completely conforming. There's no.
Yes. The the memo from the village planner confirmed it meets, it meets all the zoning requirements.
And where are we with engineering? Are you satisfied?
We, when we had a few comments, you remember on these, and it's been happening on a couple of these. We haven't been getting the stormwater till the second submission. So we just looked at stormwater. We had a few comments, nothing too drastic or major. Similar to the last one, it talks about an existing drywall system to relocate it. With no detail. So we've got to know what's happening with that, with that system, I think. I'm sure there's more room here than the last one. There's a little more leeway as to what could happen there. But we asked for some detail there. And then also, there's a construction ramp that looked very narrow on one side. We kind of questioned if that could happen or not. More detail would need to be submitted prior to a building permit, I think, in that stage it could be handled. But in general, we were okay with the, with the sizing of the proposed system. We were fine with that.
I mean, it seems like there's a lot more real estate here to do what needs to be done. It just, the details have to be ironed out. Is that, are you?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wanted to add that Hudson Engineering is here with us tonight if there are any questions. I did want to point out that this, this construction ramp is actually existing because there was a construction project on, on the site that was abandoned. So, so this is actually an existing ramp that we plan to use for this, this project.
I guess one thing we would just, we questioned, is it wide enough? Because there's a set of stairs right next to it. So that's just. If you, I mean, obviously, you could bring, you know, a small, maybe you can get a small bobcat down there with that, possibly, you know.
Yeah, maybe with a crane, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
You know, we actually met the contractor on site and he felt he could do the excavation needed for the footings and the small, the small spa with a, with a small excavator. He felt, he felt that he could make use of that ramp that was there.
And do you have any thing to say about this?
Mr. Manley?
No, everything is fine zoning wise. It's all engineering from here.
Yeah.
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 Remember in the last meeting, you.
So it seems.
Because of the danger of the road collapsing, et cetera, you.
I'd like to move it along.
Move it along.
Yeah. Yeah. Unless anybody has any issues, we haven't heard so far. I'm prepared to.
Yeah, me too.
Support this. Agreed.
Yeah. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone? I don't think there's anybody in the room that wants to speak about it, but is there anyone on? Online? Well, then I would, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We do have a resolution. Would you be so kind as to read the resolution?
It's going to be very similar to the last one.
I'll, I'll talk to the person that's writing these resolutions. We'll make them a little shorter.
Village of Dobbs Ferry Planning Board Resolution granting site plan approval for the property at seven Fairlawn Avenue. Background, whereas Dan and Beth Fostner, the applicant seek site plan approval to construct a new porch and outdoor room and outdoor kitchen, plunge pool and patio addition to an existing single-family residence. The subject property is located at seven Fairlawn Avenue. The project site is located in the one-family residential six OF six zoning district. Whereas the project will result in the construction or expansion of a single-family residence on an approved lot and is classified under the site environmental quality, the state environmental quality review act, CEPR, implementing regulations as a type two action in accordance with along code. And whereas the pursuant, and whereas pursuant to sections two thirty-nine L and M of the New York State General Municipal Law, the planning board referred the applicant, application materials to the Westchester County Department of Planning for their review and comments. And whereas the planning board conducted a duly noticed public hearing on October seventh, twenty twenty-one, at which time all those wishing to be heard were given the opportunity to be heard. And the public hearing was closed on October, October seventh, twenty twenty-one. And whereas the planning board has carefully examined and considered the materials submitted by the applicant in support of the project as follows, it's a long list of plans and other supporting materials. Whereas the planning board has also reviewed and examined letters, reports and memorandum from the board's consulting engineer and planner. And whereas all testimony provided at the public hearing was carefully considered and the planning board deliberated in public on the applicant's request for approval of the project and planning board determination. Whereas the planning board is familiar with the project site and the general vicinity and has reviewed the application in accordance with chapter three hundred zoning and land use of the village code. And whereas the planning board has conducted an extensive review of the applicant's proposal and finds that the applicant has satisfactorily addressed the criteria for granting section three hundred dash fifty-two D of village code, including some consistency with the village's local waterfront revitalization plans. And whereas the planning board considered amongst other things, traffic access, walkways, circulation, parking, stormwater, landscaping and screening, lighting, noise, natural and environmentally sensitive features, and whether the proposed project will exceed the capacities of existing municipal roads or utility services. And now, therefore be it resolved, the planning board of the village of Dobbs Ferry determines that based on the findings and the reasoning set forth below, the application for site plan approval is granted and subject to the following conditions. One, approved plans, except as otherwise provided herein, all work shall be performed in strict compliance with the plans submitted to the planning board and approved by the planning board as follows. There's another long list. The following conditions must be met before the planning board chair may sign the approved site plan, the final site plan. The following language shall be added to the plan. Approved subject to all regulations and conditions of October seventh, twenty twenty-one resolution of the planning board of the village of Dobbs Ferry, New York. Any change, eraser, modification or revision of this plan absent reapproval from the planning board shall avoid this approval. B, the planning board's approval is conditioned upon applicant receiving all approvals required by other governmental approving agencies without material deviation from the approved plans. Evidence of compliance with conditions and any such approvals must be submitted to the village building departments. The application must address all of the, to the full satisfaction of the village engineer, all outstanding stormwater, stormwater maintenance agreement and engineering issues raised in the hearings and documents submitted to the board, including the October sixth, twenty twenty-one engineering letter. E, the applicant shall pay all outstanding consultant review and legal fees in connection with, in connection with the planning board review of this application. Six, force and effects, no portion of any approval by the planning board shall take effect until, one, all conditions are met. Two, the final site plan is signed by the chair of the planning board. And three, the final site plan signed by the planning board is but filed with the land use officer. Within a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty days after receiving approval of the site plan, with or without modifications, the applicant shall submit two paper copies and one electronic copy of the site plan to the board of trustees and or the planning board for stamping and signing. This timeframe may, may be extended for a maximum of two ninety-day periods. Landscaping, in accordance with three hundred dash forty-four, required landscaping improvements shall be installed prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy for all structures. However, if the landscaping is not able to be installed prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued due to winter weather or other safe limitations, the property owner shall post a financial guarantee for the improvements equal to one hundred and fifty percent of the cost of improvements. So that the certificate can be issued. Installation of all landscape improvements shall then be completed before June thirtieth of the following year. This guarantee shall be released upon acceptance by the village of the completed landscaping. Commencing work, no work shall be commenced on any portion of the site without first contacting the building inspector to ensure that all permits and approvals have been attained, obtained and to establish an inspection schedule. The project must adhere to all applicable state and village codes. Issuance of certificate, of a certificate of occupancy, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until improvements shown on the site plan are installed or a sufficient performance guarantee has been posted for improvements not yet completed. The performance guarantee shall be posted in accordance with the procedures specified in village law seven dash seven twenty-five A or seven dash seven thirty as applicable. The amount and sufficiency of such performance guarantees shall be determined by the land use officer. The amount of such guarantees shall be in the form of ninety-five percent surety and five percent cash. I make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye. Just, just to let the board know, because I know there's always a little joking on how long the resolutions are. But the background is, so actually lays out all the, the, your environmental review that you had to do, the GML, if that needs to go out, the, the fact that you actually had a public hearing and that you actually looked at particular plans. And then it specifically notes that you did look at, you know, letters, reports and also public hearing comments. And these are all important in case this ever gets challenged, that you actually looked at and establishes your record. And then the planning board determination, actually, you have to specifically look at certain criteria within certain sections of your zoning code. And so those are identified. You have to find consistency to LWRP and your whole entire villages in the LWRP. So that has to be a finding of the board. And then lastly, it's just your site conditions, which specifically identify your plans that you want the applicant or the, when they pull for the building permit, have to adhere to. And then the file, the other conditions are ones that are actually in your code itself that I brought out so that the applicant understands that for some reason, the building department asks for certain bonds or requires the escrows to be paid, et cetera. So just wanted to explain that to you.
Right. So, so in short, in short, all of those things have to be in the, in the resolution. I assume that the resolutions are published like online. So as long as there, as long as that information is in there, you don't have to read the resolution.
Really?
You don't.
That's big news.
If you wanted to, just in the interest of, of public information, you know, you could read the first paragraph, which explains who the parties are and what the application is for. And then skip down to the, now therefore, and I'm sure that we could even highlight for, for the board the important things that relate specifically, specifically to that application. You know, they all need certificates of occupancy and they all need those other things that are listed in the code. And it has to be in the, the, the resolution, but they don't all have to be read verbatim, so.
No.
So we could work, we could work to try to.
That's a key limit, but.
I would appreciate that. All of that has to be.
So as long as you, you can identify the resolution and where to find it publicly.
Yeah.
So now would be a good time to ask Steve, who's been on the planning board for forty years, how he feels about learning. Hundreds of, wasting precious.
That's just me.
His life to have read hundreds of hours of.
Thank you, counselor.
Let's do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good. Item number seven on our agenda, it's listed as vacant lot, SBL three point six oh dash two four dash eleven. Continuation of pre-submission conference for proposed new house on vacant lot off Ryary Road.
Sorry, it's just the paper street access.
Yeah, this is gonna be exciting.
Has there been any legal progress in that?
It was a letter. Yeah, no, I, I haven't seen anything on this application at all. I looked online and it didn't see.
So is there anything for us to do at this point?
Is the applicant available?
I'm sure.
Not, not if the applicant's not.
No, well, it's not a public hearing either.
Oh. That too. That too.
But you're, you're welcome to submit a letter and we will all read it.
You live on Luzern?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, we saw it. I saw it.
I didn't see it.
I actually would like maybe some clarification, if that's possible.
Like, again, I think the applicant should be here. I don't want to speak to the application at all unless they're here to hear it and to respond. They may have issues.
Okay.
Jermaine to their application.
That's fair.
Wasn't, wasn't the applicant going to do some research and get back to us or something?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I think he's still working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, typically, anything that would be submitted on the record would be delivered to the applicant as well. I don't know if that's been done, but.
Is it on the microphone?
No, they're not on the microphone, but they're, it's not a public hearing. So we're in a quandary.
So, okay. So we'll move on. Item number eight, our last item, twenty Lyman Place.
That was, that was this.
Wasn't it?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Oh, that's a vacant lot. Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is different.
I misunderstood. I apologize.
This is not vacant. This is a pre-submission conference for proposed renovation in addition to existing one family residence, including a new fortune patio.
Hello again. Hi.
I shouldn't have just kept you on.
All right. Well, let's, again, there's Christina. She's here. I'm going to pull up the drawings and we can just go, go through them.
Okay, I'm Christina Griffin. I'm here with Suzanne Levine, the architects for an addition and renovation to twenty Lyman Place. What we're planning to do is to add, expand the first floor by about four, four hundred and forty five square feet. This is our site plan. And on the, in light blue here is showing the one story addition we're planning to add. We're also going to extend the second floor, which is a dark blue area around the rear. We are planning also to expand the patio to the side of the house. This panel will be about four hundred and sixty eight square feet of new impervious surfaces. In addition to those changes to the property, we're planning to add, in addition to the front of the house, which will be the new entry, that's fifty seven square feet, and that has a new walk and series of steps going down and, and connecting back into the existing steps at the street. We're planning to put a new fence that is going to be a few feet from the property line here that we wrap all the way around and close the property. To the right, you'll see our zoning chart. This addition meets the zoning code for the OF six zone in all respects and lot coverage setbacks, impervious surfaces. We have our cal, cal bridge calculations here on the right. We should go to the next slide, please, Suzanne. This sheet is showing photographs of the existing house. As you can see, it's a, it's like a one and a half story Cape Cod with dormers each side of a gable roof and it has a very long staircase. We're planning to change that to make it safer and more comfortable. So we're going to replace most of the stair and have grew it a different shape. You'll see on the right is the pictures of the house, the way it exists right now. It's a very small house and the different additional square footage, it will have a much more comfortable layout. To the right here, we have a street view showing our twenty Lyman Place in the middle here, which has, you know, on each side of it, the houses are, are similar in size. Most of them are two story houses with gable or hip roofs. Down below Suzanne, please, can you move the sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then down below are just photographs of neighboring properties. Which are all a similar two and, two and one and a half story houses with different shaped roofs, but mostly gable roofs, clapboard, some stucco. And our design is, is going to, our goal for our design is to have the house fit with the scale of the neighborhood, but may with a more of a modern feeling. Next page, this is our, these are just our demolition plans. I'll just show you quickly. The addition is shown on the left and we're planning to open up the house so that we have a larger living room, dining room, kitchen on the first floor, new entry in the front. On the second floor, we're going to take out walls so that we can reconfigure that floor and create two comfortable bedrooms, one larger master. We're going to keep the status of the three bedrooms in the house, but in, but larger bedrooms. Next sheet is first floor plan. This is showing our addition on the left, which is, is the new living dining kitchen area that is opening up to a patio that comes around the side of the house and links up with the existing patio in the back. The house on the right side is staying with some small changes and upgrade, new entry in the front. Next plan, please. So our second floor plan, we're putting a small addition on this floor, but by doing that, we, we are able to renovate and expand the bedrooms that exist and create a new master bedroom suite, master bath, master bath hall bath. Next page. Okay. These are our elevations. As you can see, that we're retaining the original gable roof of the house and the shed dormers on each side, but we're expanding the house to the left, having roof lines to tie in with the original house. And in the front, we have a new entry with steps coming down to the street. West elevation is showing the addition on the side with the large sliding doors that open up onto the deck. Next slide, please. And these are our other elevations. This is the north elevation, which is actually the back of the house, back entry, and the other east elevation, which is an existing wall that we're going to renovate and, and upgrade. New siding, new windows.
Nice little house. Nice area.
And I think today is to just to give you an idea, general idea of the project. This is a, I guess, pre, pre submission, pre planning board submission. We have already started the stormwater design for the project. There has already been a test pit that has been made on site to do a perk test and we should have the stormwater design for our next meeting.
That's good. It sounds nice.
Just curious, are those rocks sticking out there? Is this all a ledge or is there any, is there any soil there?
See, there's a, as you see from the photographs, there's a lot of lawn that kind of surrounds those rocks. So.
That's good.
We know that is, is something we have to work with. We have to, the patio will probably hug the edge of the rock.
Working into the design.
And hopefully they'll find a place for, to perk.
Just, just a suggestion on, on, on these, you know, simpler residential ones like this. It would be a good idea if they, even though it's a pre-submission conference, to come in with the stormwater. Because we're going to, again, we'll see the stormwater for the first time for the next submission. And I don't know if the board's so inclined to move these things along more quickly, it's hard. You're always going to have some comments on their submission hanging out there. So it's just a suggestion, Christina Griffin does a lot of these. It would be good with these. If we, if we looked at the stormwater now, you can get that out of the way. You might be in a position at the next meeting to wrap it up. I don't know, but.
I would hope to do that.
Yeah, right. No, I know. So that's why I'm saying, you know, you'll likely have engineering comments still hanging out there at the next meeting.
You know, we.
Should we call for a public hearing at the next meeting?
Yeah, I want to call for a public hearing. I would move, we have a public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor?
Just like to reiterate, I, I agree with Anthony. We have the short of short deadline for continuations, basically for small changes to, you know, comments from the board. But for something that's coming in for the first time, it should make it by the deadline, the actual calendar deadline.
That's true. And then you, you saw that on the last two, the stormwater came in, you know, for the first time on those. And we had, you know, just a couple of days really to look at it, you know, so.
Right.
We're always going to find something that we don't agree with completely. So.
That's your job.
The earlier the better and.
I just wanted to confirm the deadline.
Deadline is the calendar deadline for our next meeting. So just look on the village website at the calendar.
So it's not a continuation deadline. It's a, the calendar.
Right.
Right.
Right. The continuation deadline is for small changes from comments.
Okay.
Understood.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Good night. I move adjourned.
Same.
All in favor?